At the bank, so yes.
I'm going to open up the Norwich Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Today is April the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, time is five thirty P M. Christine, would you please leave us in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the planning of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion on the floor for the approval of the meds from the Board of Education meeting on March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Kevin Saytani, I make the motion.
Motion on the floor.
Christine Distasi, I'll second that motion.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion? There ring none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So ordered.
One abstention. I wasn't there.
Thank you. An abstention. Alvin is not here at the meeting. Awards.
Thank you. The first award that we have this evening is to Cindy Beauregard. She is a beloved member of our school community. She is a fact employee on community engagement and attendance at Mahan. She received the United Way Volunteer of the Year Award, which is a pretty big deal. She is not here this evening. She is elected to receive the award at Mahan in front of her students, so we would really just like to congratulate her. Cindy, she is on every committee you could ever imagine, is always there for for students and families in need, and we're really happy that she was acknowledged in this way. Our our next award is our M L K essay winner Vanessa Spruill, and she is here tonight. I'm gonna award her, oops. I'm gonna award her a a commendation, but she also has has been kind enough to want to read her essay to us, so her her award-winning essay. So Vanessa, if you could come up. That you can wear on your lapel or you put on your collar to show that you have received an accolade from the board. If you have a seat, maybe bring the mic over where it's comfortable for you, and we'd love to hear your speech.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. fought for everyone to be treated equally. It means that as a young black girl, I could be treated equally and not be discriminated against for my race. This also means I will not get split up from my friends because of the color of my skin. Growing up as a Polynesian and black girl, in the past, I was told my long, wavy, beautiful hair was a wig growing up. I was called the Black Repentant while they told me to let down my hair. This was an example of me getting discriminated against for the way that I look. Just as Martin Luther King preached for kindness, peace, and no violence, I would like to be a social worker so I could spread peace and kindness, just as Martin Luther King preached for. My goal is to work in a middle school setting because I know how much of a change that I can make for kids my age. When I came into middle school, I didn't have the same mindset as I have now. The support service at my school helped me throughout my whole three years here. Those teachers inspired me to do what I want to do in the future. While I'm studying social work in college, I would participate in sports such as college cheer, track, and volleyball. I have been doing cheer since I was five and recently started volleyball and track in two thousand and twenty-two. Cheers helped me grow in so many ways. I have been captain majority of my sports career, and just as Martin Luther King Jr., I can show leadership and take charge when I know my team is in help. Cheers taught me leadership, confidence, and perseverance. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a hero and an independent role model to me. He inspired me to be more independent with myself, work harder for my accomplishments, and never give up on working hard even when people are dragging me down. Dr. Martin Luther King went through many different challenges while fighting for for freedom, though he was getting hatred and discriminated while standing up for what he believed in, that did not stop him from fighting for our people.
Wonderful job. Congratulations to you. Well-deserved honor. The next award that I'm pleased to give is our CAPS Award recipient, and this award goes to Chloe Brown from Uncas. Could you come forward, please? Your family's welcome to the chair. So this is the certificate that we'd like to give you because you are a very special person from your school, the only one. And this is a medal, like the gold medal that the Olympians get. Would you mind if I put it on you? That you are a big. Great job. And then Mr. Camp is gonna say a few words about you so he can introduce you to us.
Yeah. Good evening. It is my distinct honor and privilege to introduce our two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three CAPS Award recipient from Uncas School, Chloe Brown. I'd like to congratulate you on being named this year's CAPS Award recipient for Uncas School. Chloe, as a proud member of the Uncas Wolf Pack, you show your paws every day by being present, having a positive attitude, making wise choices, and showing service. Chloe's joined this evening by her family. Chloe has been a member of the Uncas Pack for almost six years. It seems like yesterday when she entered kindergarten, right? And in speaking with her teachers, they shared many reasons why Chloe was chosen as this year's recipient. Chloe Brown possesses a positive attitude in her classroom, school, and community. She comes to school every day willing to work hard, help others, and take responsibility for her learning. Another teacher commented, Chloe is a risk taker. She asks challenging, higher-level questions in class and is willing to make mistakes, learn, and improve. Another one of her teachers commented, she is a leader to her peers and shares her excitement and eagerness to learn new things. There isn't a day where she is not giving her best effort. Mr. Santoro, Chloe's music teacher, Chloe has taken up clarinet as a fifth grader, practicing often and performing as a member of the Uncas School Band. She also participates in our school's club sports, specifically soccer, and displays a great teammate mentality. Chloe's favorite subject is math. She will be a Kelly, well, they're not the Cougars anymore, the Kelly Steam.
We're Cougar.
They're still the Cougars. All right. Kelly Cougar. When I was here, they were the Cougars. She she's looking forward to being at Kelly next year at N F A for her high school, and when she's grown, when she's out of school, a fashion designer.
Nice.
So Board of Ed members. Well, maybe I'll try to convince her.
I'm here for you if you and my Martin Luther King Award winner need jobs.
Board of Ed members and administrators and members of the community, Chloe is a future leader, maybe senator. And on behalf of Uncas School, I'm honored to recognize Chloe Brown as our CAPS Award recipient.
Congratulations, Chloe.
Thank you so much, Mr. Camp, and thank you, Chloe's family. Congratulations.
Reports. Order the superintendent, please.
Thank you. More joyful awards. Pleased to announce the Key is Me Teacher Award recipient for April is teacher Susan Blinderman, who is a kindergarten teacher at Mahan. And the sentiment that accompanied accompanied this nomination was, I am nominating Susan because she's made a seamless transition to our school this year. She was formerly a teacher at Huntington and has already become an important member of the Mahan community. She is supportive and collaborative partner who cares deeply for the children. Susan puts in an extraordinary amount of her own time working on her classroom and preparing for instruction and is a wealth of knowledge. Any student is lucky to have Mrs. Blinderman as their teacher. Thank you for all you do, Susan Blinderman. Our I Make a Difference Support Staff Award recipient for April is Sherri Layton, Food Service Manager at Veterans School. And the the sentiment that accompanied her nomination is that Sherri has been a dedicated kitchen manager to the Norwich Public Schools for over twenty years. Since COVID, she's been working with limited staff and still gets every student fed on an ongoing, timely basis and always with a smile on her face. Sherri volunteers to assist her coworkers whenever there is an issue or if someone else needs her help. Our school kitchen simply would not run as efficiently if it were not for her organization and her willingness to be flexible. Sherri is most deserving of this award. Thank you for all that you do. Our You Inspire Me Student Award recipient for this month is Isabella Pagan from Huntington in grade four, and it was submitted by her teacher. I am nominating fourth-grade student Isabella Pagan for the You Inspire Me Award. Isabella had made has made wonderful gains this year in all subject areas. She has overcome challenges to be an eager learner and loyal friend. I am so proud of how Isabella has accepted, learned, and utilized various strategies in the classroom. I love that Isabella has high expectations of herself and works hard to reach those expectations. She asks thoughtful questions to improve her understanding of topics and improve her independent work. Isabella's openness to learn and apply new skills inspires me as her teacher to do the same. I am very proud of Isabella and believe that her efforts should be recognized. Thank you for your consideration. Congratulations, Isabella. I have in my report some COVID data vacancies for the school year and our plug for our community conversation that's happening on May third from five thirty to seven thirty at Uncas School. Pizza dinner is being served and it's free of charge, of course. We also have childcare available, and the topic is anxiety, depression, and suicide prevention. This was one of the top three topics that the parents wanted to get more information on, so we hope that anyone available will join us on that evening. And then I'd like to welcome two of our new principals that we welcomed virtually last month, but because of a snowstorm, we weren't able to welcome them and their families in person and give them an opportunity to meet you all and say a few things. So the first principal, and they have little ones with them today, so I'm gonna talk really fast because they're being so well behaved. So first, welcome to our new Mahan principal, Bill Hollihan. We began a new principal search for Mahan, and I went over who was on the interview committee last month, but I thanked them very much for for their support. Committee unanimously selected Bill to become the Mahan Elementary School principal as of July two thousand and twenty-three. Bill currently serves as assistant principal in Norwich. He formally served as a math intervention specialist in Trumbull, a middle school math teacher of the year in New Haven, and a math lead teacher and department chair in Florida. He graduated from the University of Vermont with a Bachelor's of Arts in Political Studies, and I said last month, and in Latin. He pulled me aside and said, no, no, it wasn't Latin, it was Latin American studies. So feel free throughout the day to ask him anything in Latin.
So my remarks in Latin are inappropriate.
Which we really is really something we really love about Bill, and so I could not help myself but interject that fun fact. He graduated from Springfield College with a Master's of Education degree. He received his graduate study certification, secondary education teacher preparation from Grand Canyon State University, and a master's degree in educational leadership from the University of West Florida. He has experience in delivering professional development, leading STEM initiatives, managing systems of data, managing bullying, and Title IX investigations. I'm pretty sure he's Lisa's favorite report doer. He's very precise with his reports. He's led math curriculum and instruction initiatives. He's the P L C Personal Learning Community Facilitator and Testing Coordinator. As a teacher, he earned the Golden Apple Award of Distinction in Teaching in the Chamber of Commerce Teacher of the Year Award. Bill and his family, who is with us this evening, make their home in East Haven. Please join me in welcoming Bill to Mahan School. If you'd like to say a few remarks, we would love to listen to them. If you just want to give a friendly hi-de-ho, we're okay with that, too.
Sure. I just want to say thank you to the board and the interview committee for giving me this opportunity. Thank you to my wife. I'm the educator I am because usually she's got the right idea and points me in the right direction, and this helped me along the way. And then just want to say thank you to Dr. Northcut and the global team. I learned more this year than I've ever learned in any one year, and I hope to continue that trend and make you guys all proud as I take on this next step of journey at Mahan. So thank you again, and I can't wait to hit the ground running.
I would also like to welcome Nicholas Federici in person to as the new principal for Veterans Elementary School. The committee unanimously selected Nick to become the Veterans Elementary School principal as of July first. He currently serves as an assistant principal in Norwich. He formally served as the Dean of Climate and Culture at Teachers Global Studies. He was a grade four and grade five teacher in Avon, Connecticut for eight years. Before entering the field of education, Nick served as a police officer, squad leader, and SWAT team member in South Carolina before moving back to Connecticut. He also served our country as section leader in the United States Marines for four years. Nick has experience as a summer school coordinator, leading data teams, leading safety and professional development committees, serving on a math instructional leadership committee, creating project-based learning curriculum units for teachers, implementing teacher choice professional development, and coordinating a Saturday Academy. Nick graduated from Central Connecticut State University with a Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary Education and a master's degree in science, technology, engineering, and math. He received his sixth-year diploma in educational leadership from the University of Connecticut. Nick and his family make their home in Weathersfield. Please join me in welcoming Nick to Veterans Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you to everyone that was involved in me getting to this position. It's been a dream of mine to be a principal of a school, and I cannot wait to be a principal at Veterans and work with all the great people that I've already met there. Thank you to the people behind me, Raina, Brandy, and a lot of other principals and colleagues who have helped me along the way. Same with Bill. I've learned a lot in just his last year since I've been in Norwich about how to be a better leader, and I appreciate that. And I look forward to their continued support as I go down this journey. It's not gonna be an easy job, I know that. And then thank you to my wife, who, Hillary back there, who has the hardest job, just stays home with those three kids back there. And I tell her every day that she has the hardest job, and I appreciate the support she gives me because I could work the late nights with ever not ever having question or concern with doing that. Give all my dedication to my students because that's what they deserve. So thank you very much for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
I also, the principals were gracious enough to provide us all with their end-of-the-year promotional activities, times, events, locations, and dates, so you have those here for you. They love to see you at those events if you if your schedule permits. I included our April fourth budget hearing with the city council. The statements that that I made, they were very gracious and warm and welcoming to Chairman Aldai and Bob Sarpensky and I. We have sort of a chasm between the budget that we asked for and was approved by this body and and what the city manager has recommended and feels that the city can afford. And so I look forward to working with the ad hoc committee as we work through this. And I wanted to make sure that I, you know, provided you with with my commentary. Several staff members joined me yesterday in making some revisions to the ed specs documents for our new schools. There was a change between D R A and the Construction Solutions Group, and we are, you know, forging forward. So it was our pleasure to sort of fill in some of the blanks about what the what the infrastructure would look like in the plans that were developed by the community and the building committee. And I sent that off to them yesterday, so I'm sure you'll be seeing it in your budget, excuse me, in your school building meetings coming up. I have listed upcoming meetings for myself, and as always, our our fantastic Sarah Dusso has a chock full of information in her beautiful Equity Department Board of Ed report. She tracks our attendance for us. She speaks about all the wonderful work that is happening with the Deans of Climate and Culture at Global Studies, Anne Kelly, the town hall meetings that they've brought back, and the accolades for Panther Pride and Kelly Steam Strong, and all of the really great climate and student work that's happening there. She speaks of the work that the Equity Coaches, who are teachers, are doing with our staff. She's referenced the behavioral logs by school and by date. The Family Engagement Major Event of the Month was organized by Ashley Favello at Mahan. The Harlem Wizards Basketball Game, and so there's some great pictures in her report from there. Deb Kevitz, a beloved family member, was announced as USA Today's Woman of the Year, and she is an active member of the community. I just saw her at Mahan. We were both reading there together for Reading Week, but she was honored for her work in the Bully Busters Program, and she does this work in our schools every year. We have the McKinney Vento information that Sarah has provided, the work that the school counselors are doing in Tier One, Tier Two, and their S R B I meetings, and the work of her fabulous social-emotional learning coaches and the data that's representing their work. Our volunteer and community engagement numbers are up to two hundred and twelve with the help of 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 our volunteer coordinator. And then she has some really great family engagement opportunities where retirees have returned back to their schools to assist with special projects. She notes a Read Across America Day at Moriarty, N F A students that are supporting kids at Teachers Global. It's really a fantastic report if you haven't had a chance to read it. I I recommend it highly, and that is my report this evening.
Thank you. All right. Any questions of, uh, string problem? There ring none. Report of the Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. So on behalf of the E L A Coaches, they want me to make sure that I let everyone know that April is Poetry Month. So that was in our newsletter that went to all staff. In mathematics, we are planning to offer at least one section of Algebra One at each of the middle schools.
It's been a long time.
And for science, we had the Kelly, we had teachers participated in the Invention Convention. So if you look up there, you'll see the pictures of students who participate, and as of course, our illustrious superintendent. And next, we have for Social Studies, the eighth-grade students participated in Blues and Beyond, where their culminating event was to showcase their music and their songs. So that will be posted on the website for those to view, but that's captured there in that picture. And then further down, I just wanted to highlight that there's amazing work that's happening in our Extended Learning Program. We have the Art Club that's at Kelly is working on students telling time using the analog clock. Everything's digital. And then we have Make Music Count, which students, it's a program that has combined both music and mathematics. So students are learning math through playing the piano, and as a result of mastering their math facts, they walk away with being able to play segments of popular songs that are across all genres, and the students get the selective text. So we have our third graders through fifth grade loving fractions. I just wanted to share that, you know, a couple of those updates from my report, as well as I have the multilingual Learners Department report. And currently, we have eight hundred five students identified as M L L. And based on the reading data from iReady, we were, we've moved five percent of students making goal in reading to fifteen percent making goal. So our M L L team is working very hard, and you'll see also for in the M L L report, the math data, they move from three percent to ten percent. So we have students who are making progress in that particular area. And then I just want to follow up with adult education. They have a student, Nicole Taylor, who was awarded the Connecticut Association for Adult and Continuing Education Learner of the Year Award in front of an audience of adult education directors, teachers, students, and state officials. In her speech will be highlighted on, which is about her role in graduation, her hopes for her future, and how being an adult learner has impacted her life. Nicole will also be honored later in the year at a ceremony at the State Capitol in Hartford. So I just wanted to share those highlights. And so that concludes my report, and I open up for any questions that you may have.
My question is about the the M L L report. It's magnificent. The question for me is, what are we gonna do to keep that number pushing forward as we're about to enter our annual relaxation zone, better known as summer?
Well, we're continuing with our Summit Enrichment through iReady, so the students are very familiar with that, and they're gonna continue to do that. And as you know, as part of our process.
And as you know, as part of our process, when they come back in the fall, we look to see what they have retained, and we continue trucking on with making improvements towards achievement. But in addition to that, through our SRBI process, our school's leadership team, they're working graciously with our students and helping them to understand how they learn best. So, we have support staff from our MLL teachers, our coaches, our math and reading specialists to help support the growth.
And again, something that you presented to us in the past is your desire not just to focus on those at the top. If you look at all your numbers, the little red is also getting smaller. Focus on the top side, but the red side is getting smaller too. The yellow is expanded, where we work. We work with them, and the rest, those will follow, and that side will get smaller. And you're doing what you said you were going to do, so thank you.
I just had a question. It's awesome that we're going to have the algebra, of course, algebra. What are going to be the parameters to decide what students get to select?
That's a great question. So, with input from our teachers, we created a criteria that is relatively open for students to get to ascertain as many students as possible. So, we're looking at, although we're looking at one of the criteria being iReady, our district assessment, however, we're also using teacher recommendations. We're looking at also for students who are just interested and want to do this, but may not necessarily be ready. During the summer, we're going to look at their track and make sure that it's for algebra preparation and so that they're ready in the fall to actually take Algebra 1. We also have a plan for, in the event that they try it and they feel that they're unsuccessful, we're going to provide tutoring through our partnership with NFA.
Oh, that's great. I see, like you said, the MLL program is going really well. So, how is the rest of the population doing right now?
They're progressing. I believe, I forget which it was, I don't know if it was January or February, I showed that a lot of the, we have a lot of students who have met their stretch growth. So, as of mid-year, we're a little beyond that point, our data is concurrent with the time of year where we are. So, at mid-year, we had 50% for both math and reading had mastered their typical growth towards their learning. So, we're compared to last year where we were at 27%. But this, we've got a lot of things in place, and students are in fact learning. So, it's for us to, we have to give it time and continue to do what we're doing to make it work.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, it's just basically a comment. With the poetry and integrating with math, yesterday was National Haiku Day. And a haiku is a 17-syllable poem. So, if anyone, to integrate it with music, the students or anyone who's interested can listen to the song "Moonlight in Vermont", which each verse is a haiku, except for the bridge. So, that integrates popular or music or jazz-type singing. Listen to Ella's version, Ella Fitzgerald's version, which absolutely won.
And if you can send that to me in an email, make sure that that gets added as our resource.
Anyone else? Thank you. Lisa.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm happy to bring you the April report from Student Services. I'm not sure that the link is working on your onboard docs, but Amber was kind enough to add the placement report as an additional document for you. But I'll review that in just a moment. Just to let you know, from that document, we have currently 121 out-of-district placements. That, from September to present time, that's 12 additional placements. As you know, that is something that we are working on. It is fluid, and, you know, sometimes we have two in and one out. It depends. So, I will have some more information on that next month as well. I wanted to let you know about our Sixth Annual Autism Wellness Resource Fair. It was the most amazing event. It was very well-attended. It was on April 6. We had, there had to have been 100 families. You know, the huge turnout. We had many different organizations, like Special Olympics and Lighthouse, who brought the mini pony, which was a big hit. We had Night to Shine. Yeah, that mini pony might become another mascot for Student Services. I really loved Lulu. I wanted to give a really special shout-out to all of the people that made that happen, especially Dr. Just Myers, Sarah Seifert, all the groups that were able to assemble all of the donations for the door prizes, our special ed supervisors, our BCBA team, our faculty and staff. We had our, a lot of admin there as well. It was just really an incredible event. So, I added some pictures for you, and it was just wonderful. And the whole kind of theme was "We All Belong", which was on the T-shirts, which I really loved. I also, because April is Autism Acceptance Month, I wanted to give a special shout-out to Stanton Elementary School. Really did a beautiful job. And I guess this is something they do on a regular basis and have different activities and information for the faculty and the students to understand autism. And it's really fabulous because they give a fact of the day, and they have songs and books that work on understanding all of the people in our school. So, I loved that, wanted to let you know about that. In addition, we are going to have our Family Collaborative, and that will be in person. We have that scheduled for the end of this month. And so, happy to host some families. We'll have refreshments and childcare available. And then, I have some information about my doings, what I've been up to. And then, I have information regarding IDEA. And is it your pleasure for me to review this now?
Um, hold on. I think it's adjourned later.
Okay, so I'll hold on.
Yes, it's under new business. So, if you wouldn't mind holding that, great.
Hold up on that. And that is what I have for my first part of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Lisa. Bob.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Majority of my comments will be focused on the 2223 year, but I do want to touch briefly on some things that are not in your budget package. If you recall, it was either in the February or March meeting, we talked about going out to our, created RFP for Food Service Outside Food Service Management Company. We did complete that process on April 13. It's a very rigid, specific process that's dictated by the state. So, that RFP did go out on the 14th and it was published. I want to thank the city purchasing agent, Bob Castrenover, and our current Food Service Director, Eric Perpetua, for their help. This was an enormous undertaking. Probably the largest RFP in terms of documentation that anyone on the planet ever does. It's more than 500 pages long, so it was an enormous effort. So, just for some deadlines, we have a pre-proposal conference with any interested parties on the 28th of April. Any responses are due on the 22nd. There'll be an evaluation committee consisting of five individuals, including a middle school and elementary school principal. If we chose to go that route, we'd have to have an executed contract by the state by June 30. So, it's a pretty involved process and very, very specific. Late this afternoon, the Appropriations Committee released their recommended budget, which is different than the government budget. It also is not the final budget. So, they'll continue to do battle. Unfortunately, it appears at this point, House Bill 5003 will not be fully funded. That was the bill that would have had significant impact on our district. Would have had magnet school tuitions no longer becoming a bill, a liability for local districts. And it would have fully funded or increased the rate at which the ECS funding formula would have hit the Alliance districts. And we would have had an additional $3 million by 2025. The Appropriations Committee is recommending a $150 million increase to K through 12 education, so that's a good thing. So, it's not dead at this point, but it's not as encouraging as it was before, despite the bipartisan support of both parties. Then, Dr. Stringfellow did mention the ad hoc committees will be starting. I believe our first meeting is the 26th of April, which is next Wednesday. And that's when we'll begin the process of finding common ground on our 2324 budget. So, those are the things that are not in the report. Now, the focus will be on the 2223 budget update. In March, the district instituted a budget freeze, as we expect to end the year with a deficit. It became more and more apparent that that's pretty much unavoidable. At this point, the deficit is projected to be $1,870,000. And the main driver behind that are special education costs. We've been talking about that pretty much on an ongoing basis since November. If I look at gross education courses for just the in-state public and private placements, they're expected to be $2,935,000 above budget. Consequently, our excess cost reimbursement grant is going to be significantly higher as well. So, I budgeted a little over $1.3 million for that. We're going to end up about $2.2 million. So, that's an increase of $868,000. Although that is good news, I would point out that we don't get reimbursement until we've spent four and a half times the net cost for pupils. So, we are spending the first $95,000 before we start to get 90 cents back on the dollar. So, it's good that the grant's going up, but it's really bad news because our high-cost placements have gone way up. And that grant is in the Board of Ed budget, and it's used to net out overall special ed expenses. In addition, our contracted sped outside services are expected to be $198,000 over budget. If I can give you one example of a contributing factor, we did have on staff a hearing impaired teacher who did leave the district. It's a very difficult position to find, if not impossible. Consequently, we're paying an outside service $425 an hour on that service. So, that alone adds over $100,000 in costs that was unexpected. And we're trying desperately to find one of those professionals, but it's very hard to do. So, when we take the overall gross increase in sped costs and then subtract the increase in excess cost reimbursement, that ends up with a net spend deficit of $2.1 million. So, if you go back to my beginning point, we're expecting 1.87 overall. So, that means we're going to be able to make up probably $400,000 through everything else. So, the cabinet thought it was best that we did go into a budget freeze to try to minimize the deficit and keep the overall deficit below the total sped deficit. So, other significant items that will be in deficit, and I call this the net impact of all salary-related items, and I talk about that in a little bit. That's going to be $564,000 over. Professional services, other professional services will be $70,000 and $81,000 over respectively. Student transportation is expected to be over by $126,000. Two of the big contributing factors of that is the significant increase in transportation by vans for McKinney-Vento students. We do receive grant funding to cover that, and in past years, that's usually been sufficient. But this year, the grant that funds that is nowhere close to covering that. And we do have several students within district that need individual van transportation, so those were unexpected. Two other items that are really out of the district's control is the significant increase that happened in electricity costs and vehicle fuel. When the budget was done, those significant spikes were not expected. And the software licensing is just a timing issue, where an item that was in next year's budget was due three months earlier. So, those are the negative items. It's a whole bunch of favorable items that will help to offset those. Those are in your packet to look at. If I look at the sped in a little bit more detail, you'll see that there's a transfer from a reserve account of $104,000. Over on the city books, there was a reserve related to special ed tuition that went back probably 10 or 12 years, and it was just sitting there. So, working with the city comptroller, we identified that as being able to be used to offset sped tuition. So, we did that accounting journal entry and moved that out of the reserve account to offset this current year expenses. So, that's kind of a cleanup. And that just summarizes in detail the ending net deficit of 2.16 on the special ed side. So, if I look at the salary items, you'll see certified staff, we're expecting to end the year under budget by almost $1.2 million. That reflects the difficulty in finding certified staff. Also reflects the problem of hiring, not a problem of hiring out-of-state teachers. They don't have this Connecticut certification. So, initially, they're not charged that item. They're over in the substitute line item. And if you pay the substitute rate, once their paperwork processes and they do obtain Connecticut certification, then they move back up into this certification line. So, we're going to be $1.2 million favorable there. Substitute certified staff on the other, $1.1 million in the whole. So, it's a second contributing factor to that besides certified, people who would normally be in a certified position being charged here, is the inability to find substitutes through our Kelly Services service. If you drop down, you'll see the professional services outside subline is going to be $439,000 under budget. So, we were anticipating filling subs through Kelly Services to the tune of over $500,000, and that hasn't happened because they can't find the substitutes or for whatever reason, they can't provide them. So, that causes, because we're using the certified, non-certified subline, you pay FICA tax on that. So, that compounds the problem, and our FICA Medicare tax line item is then $125,000 over budget. So, if you combine all of those six or seven line items that, what I called are related to staffing the district, we're going to end up $564 in the hole. And that's not terrible considering all those moving parts that are in there. Another contributing factor is the need to pay new staff higher rates than you might normally have had in past years because of the marketplace. You'll go to offer a teacher a position, and they'll argue, what can you do for me? Montville's offering this, or Preston's offering that. So, you'll end up paying a higher step price. And the price for our substitutes is also higher than it has been in previous years, and it's a common problem with all districts. I'm not going to go over the next two pages. That's every line item that's going to be under budget. You can see some of the significant ones would be technology, supplies, equipment, things like that. Those are the things that are all on hold. We have eight weeks of school left after this week, so the impact should be minimal in terms of school operations. And obviously, if something's needed for life safety issues or academic issues or an emergency, the district is going to fund those things. So, that's the bad financial news. And if you have questions related to that, I'd be glad to take them.
But the, as it stands right now, if we were at the end of the school year, we would owe 1.871?
Yes. If nothing changed, no more surprises, good or bad, no more changes in staffing or anything like that. And that would be the option to rectify. That would be the use of non-lapsing funds. The reason we want to keep, if we all go back to when the non-lapse- The reason we want to keep, if we all go back to when the non-lapsing fund was created, the intent was not for what I would call ongoing school operations, but to create new programs. It was to be used primarily for unexpected sped expenses, boiler emergencies, major capital projects like that. In relation to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we do have sped expenses budgeted at a much higher rate that reflects today's population. I don't know if they're going to have an increase in needs and placements or things like that. And I don't think the sped director can predict that at this point in time. That's always what I call financial roulette.
The special ed?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
One day it's good, and then you can get two students in tomorrow.
Yeah, I believe when Lisa and I will convert things, that at least twelve replacements just recently. And, you know, you start the year and you don't have them, and then it moves in and they move out. We didn't start seeing the increase in the McKinney-Vento transportation items until October, November, and then it just escalated.
Given, given the numbers that we have and the report that I saw in the superintendent's package, I mean, the residency officer alone saved us over two hundred thousand dollars just in one month. You know, I mean, he's made, that, that position has paid for it, you know, fifteen times over.
That was a topic of discussion at the city council meeting, and I believe when we pulled up the data, since the inception of that program three years ago, the savings have been over nine million dollars.
Yes, I just looked at it. Nine point eight million dollar savings. Nine point eight, that's a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
A lot of money. Any question mark?
So you've included some money for the shaman to bless the boilers and roofs, so we don't have any capital improvement problems?
We, we pray every day for those things. The fortunate thing is our boilers will be, they're probably shut off already with the warmer weather because they don't supply the hot water to the district. So there should be very little gas usage going forward.
We're not going to need any snow plowing.
No, and things like that have, have helped out. But there's enough negatives. This is something we monitor every week, almost daily.
All right. Let's move on to public comment. Anybody with a public comment?
No, no one signed up.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come up for a public comment? Anybody would like to come up for a public comment? Anyone would like to come up for public comments? Declare public comment closed. Mark?
Okay, pursuant to Connecticut general statute one dash two hundred, members of the Board of Education move to go into executive session for discussion of attorney-client privilege communication regarding designated high school policy. Dr. Christian E. Springfellow, Tamara Gloucester, Robert Serpensky, Lisa Hughes, Amber Ruttigliano, and attorney Peter Mayer may be asked to participate in summary all of the executive session at the request of the Board of Education.
Aaron Daniels seconded that motion.
It is. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed? So voted. We are in executive session at six twenty-two P M.
All right, it is eight oh seven P M. We are now out of executive session. We'll continue on with our agenda. Item number six, action item on the discussion and possible action regarding the IDEA grant. At this time, I'll ask Lisa to come up and give a presentation. That's what you wanted to do?
I have information for you.
Absolutely.
So I'm happy to report on it. Just pulling it up as we speak.
Thank you.
Okay, so as you know, IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, for this evening, for your consideration, the twenty-three to twenty-five special education grant. There are two entitlement grant programs under IDEA, for your consideration, six eleven and six nineteen. So six eleven is for students with disabilities, ages three through twenty-one. And six nineteen is for our children, our preschool age children, ages three through five. So of course, the purpose of this federal grant is to ensure, this entitlement ensures, that eligible students with disabilities are provided the free appropriate public education under the law, as well as works with the district and the funding sources so that our L E A expends the funds according to needs of the students. So in your, in the report for this evening, you'll see information regarding IDEA for section six eleven, with preliminary numbers for twenty-three, twenty-five through twenty-five, of a million five hundred and seventy-one thousand and change. And you can see that that is pretty similar to previous numbers. In addition to that, for preschool, I should say that six eleven is funding approximately over nine hundred and fifty students. Where our preschools, a little bit over ninety students with disabilities. So you can see that preschool is at forty thousand and some. So in addition to that, I wanted just to draw your attention as well to the proportionate share of parentally placed private schools. And that is our obligation as a district to provide funding for students who are privately placed. That encompasses fifteen students. You can see a much smaller number there for their proportionate share. Both sections of the grant, six eleven and six nineteen, are really critical, necessary pieces for our students with disabilities. And the way in which we spend this money is extremely important. The grant continues to support one of our special education supervisors. It provides instructional salaries and benefits, in addition to special education teachers and paraprofessionals and behavior specialists. And so you probably will recall from different reports I've given you this year, we do have a very strong vision in student services for behavioral supports. It's very important, I think, that when we start thinking about our students who are placed out of district, the stronger we build our infrastructure here in Norwich with our behavioral supports, our mental health providers, the better equipped we're going to be to support the students that we have and incoming needs of our students. So this grant is critical, and the way we spend it is critical. It also allows us to provide a continuum of services. You know, here in Norwich, we have specialized programs across the district. And our vision is to do more inclusive practices and co-teaching, which will really provide an additional professional development for our teachers and all of those individuals working with our students. So in addition to professional development for our teachers and everyone else in schools, we're looking specifically at our paraprofessionals. They've been engaged in really specific training this year because now it is state mandated that we provide that for our paraprofessionals, and they deserve that training. So we are looking to continue a comprehensive and sustained approach to improving their effectiveness in the way in which they're interacting with children in classrooms and a co-teaching model and more inclusion across the district. In addition to that, the grant helps us with our collective responsibility to help, I'm sorry, improve student performance and achievement because that's what it's all about, right? And in addition to that, being culturally responsive. So I did touch upon the proportionate share for our parentally placed students. Again, that incorporates fifteen students. We do have a special educator who consults with the privates, and they do kind of consultation in terms of supports for those students that encompasses. It gives them recommendations. And we also have, in addition to that, you know, just the opportunity to work with those as part, those schools as partners with some of our Norwich students. So that is really pretty straightforward with the IDEA funding. It's not something that we can control. It's something that, you know, is provided to us. And it is important that we use this to supplement the state and local and other federal funds. It can't be made in place of. So we really need to be very aware of, again, how we're allocating these monies and how we're expending them. As you know, they have deadlines. They have to be spent by. I'm happy to answer questions.
Yeah, well, what is the anticipated dollar amount of these grants?
The total amount is listed right on the front. So you see it in the?
No, I don't see it.
We don't have, there's no attachment.
Oh, I mean, it's not, you don't have, I don't have the attachment.
We don't have the attachment.
IDEA attachment.
It's in Lisa's.
It's embedded in my report.
It's in Lisa's report, three point.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
I thought to myself, did I forget to put that in?
No, it's in there.
Okay.
You got any other questions?
No, that's it.
Hearing, any of the comments, questions? Hearing none. I need a motion from the floor, please.
Kevin, Kevin Seaton, Kevin Seatani, I, motion to, for the board to approve the submission of IDEA six one one and six nineteen, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four entitlement grant programs under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act.
Got it. Motion on the floor. I need a second. Second by Karleen.
I'll second it. I just want to note it's two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five.
Two-year grant. Thank you. All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Moving on to unfinished business. Action item seven point one, discussion and possible action regarding policy five one one six designated high schools. Need motion on the floor?
Mark Kulos, motion to accept the draft policy five one one six for designated high schools with an effective date of October first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion on the floor. We need a second, please.
I'll follow up and second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Seven point two, action item, discussion and possible action to delete policy number four one one two and four two one one personnel.
Aaron Daniels, so moved.
Second.
Mark Kulos, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Action seven point three, action item, discussion and possible action regarding policy four one one eight, prohibition on recommendations for psychotropic drugs.
Aaron Daniels, who approved the updated policy four one one eight.
Christine Distasi, I'll second that.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Seven point four, action item, discussion and possible action regarding policy four one one eight dash one one two, sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace.
Mark Kulos, with the motion that we approve the update to four one one eight point one one two, sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace policy.
Kevin Seatani, I will second that motion.
Second, motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Action item seven point five, discussion and possible action regarding policy number four one one eight dash two three one and four two one eight point eight, two three one, alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free workplace.
Aaron Daniels, move to approve the update to policy four one one eight point two three one and four two one eight.
And six nineteen is for our children, our preschool age children, ages three through five. So of course, the purpose of this federal grant is to ensure, um, this entitlement ensures that eligible students with disabilities um are uh provided the free appropriate public education under uh the law as well as um you know uh works with the district and the funding sources so that our L E A um uh expends the funds according to needs of the students. So uh in your uh in the report for this evening, you'll see um information regarding um I D E A for section six eleven um with preliminary numbers for twenty-three, twenty-five through twenty-five of a million five hundred and seventy-one thousand um and change. And uh you can see that that is uh pretty similar um to previous numbers. In addition to that, for preschool, um I should say that six eleven is funding um approximately over nine hundred and fifty students. Where our preschools um a little bit over ninety students with disabilities. Uh so you can see that uh preschool is at forty thousand um and and some. So in addition to that, I wanted just to draw your attention as well to the proportionate share for actually pay uh placed private schools. And uh that is our obligation as a district to provide funding for students who are privately placed. Um that encompasses fifteen students. You can see a much smaller number there for their proportionate share. Um both sections of the grant, six eleven and six nineteen, are really critical, um necessary pieces of our students with disabilities. And the way in which we spend this money is extremely important. Um the grant continues to support uh one of our special education supervisors. It provides instructional salaries and benefits in addition to special education teachers and paraprofessionals and behavior specialists. And so you probably will recall from different reports I've given you this year, we do have a a very strong vision in student services uh for behavioral supports. Uh it's very important, I think, that when we start thinking about our um students who are placed out of district, the stronger we build our infrastructure here in Norwich with our behavioral supports, our mental health uh providers, the better equipped we're going to be to support the students that we have and incoming needs of our students. So this grant is critical and the way we spend it is critical. Um it also allows us to provide a continuum of services. You know, here in Norwich, we have uh specialized programs across the district. Um and our vision is to do more inclusive practices and co-teaching, which will really um provide an additional uh professional development for our teachers and all of those um individuals working with our students. So um in addition to professional development for our teachers and everyone else in in the schools, we're looking specifically at our paraprofessionals. They've been engaged in um really specific training this year um because now it is state mandated that we provide that um for our our paraprofessionals and they deserve that training. Um so we are uh looking to continue a comprehensive and sustained approach to improving their effectiveness in the way in which they're interacting with children um in classrooms and a co-teaching model and more inclusion um across the district. In addition to that, the grant helps us um with our collective responsibility to help in for yeah, I'm sorry, improve student performance and achievement because that's what it's all about, right? Um and in addition to that, um being culturally responsive. Um so I did touch upon the proportionate share uh for our parentally placed students. Again, that um incorporates fifteen students. Uh we do have a special educator who consults with the privates um and they do kind of a consultation in terms of um supports for those students that in that encompasses. It gives them recommendations. Uh and we also um have, in addition to that, um you know, just the opportunity to work with those as part, those schools as partners with some of our Norwich students. So that is really uh pretty straightforward uh with the I D E A funding. It's not something that uh we can control. It's something that, you know, is is uh provided to us and it is important that we use this to um supplement the state and local and other federal funds. It can't be make in place of. So we really need to be um very aware of, again, how we're allocating these monies and um how we're expending them. As you know, they have deadlines. They have to be spent by. I'm happy to answer questions.
Yeah, well, what is the anticipated dollar amount of these grants?
The total amount is um is listed right on the front, so. You see it in the.
No, I don't see it.
We don't have it.
Oh, I mean, it's not, you don't have to, I don't have the attachment.
We don't have the attachment.
I D E A attachment.
Um it's in Lisa's.
It's it's embedded in the in my report.
It's in uh Lisa's report, three point.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Oh.
I thought to myself, did I forget to put that in?
No, it's in there.
Okay.
You got any other questions?
No, that's it.
Hearing any any of the comments, questions? Hearing none. I need a motion from the floor, please.
Kevin, it's Kevin Seaton, Kevin Seatani. I uh motion to for the board to approve the submission of idea six one one and six nineteen, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand uh twenty-four entitlement uh grant programs under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act.
Got it. Motion on the floor. I need a second. Second by Carleen.
I'll second it. I just want to note it's two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five.
Yes, two-year grant. Okay, thank you. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor? Opposed? So voted. Moving on to unfinished business. Action item seven point one, discussion and possible action regarding policy five one one six designated high schools. Need motion on the floor?
Mark Kulos uh motion to accept the draft policy five one one six for designated high schools with an effective date of October first, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion on the floor. We need a second, please.
I would rather second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Uh seven point two, action item, discussion and possible action to delete policy number four one one two and four two one one personnel.
Aaron Daniels, so moved.
Second.
Mark Kulos second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Uh action seven point three, action item, discussion and possible action regarding policy four one one eight. Uh prohibition on recommendations for psychotropic drugs.
Aaron Daniels, who approved the updated policy four one one eight.
Christine Distasi, I'll second that.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Seven point four, action item, discussion and possible action regarding policy four one one eight dash one one two, sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace.
Uh Mark Kulos uh with the motion that we approve the uh uh update to four one one eight point one one two, sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace policy.
Kevin Seatani, I will second that motion.
Second, motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Uh action item seven point five, discussion and possible action regarding policy number four one one eight dash two three one and four two one eight point eight uh two three one, alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free workplace.
Aaron Daniels moved to approve the update to policy four one one eight point two three one and four two one eight two three one.
Karina will second that motion.
Motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Action seven point six, discussion and possible action regarding policy four one one eight point four, four two one eight point four, employee use of the district's computer systems and electronic communications.
Kulos moved that uh we approve the updates to policy four one one eight point four and four two one eight point four, employee use of the district computer systems and electronic communications.
Kevin Seatani, I will second that motion.
A motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Seven point eight, seven point seven, discussion and possible action regarding policy four one one nine, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children or reports of sexual assault of students by school employees.
Kevin Seatani, move to approve updates to policy number four one one nine.
The motion on the floor and we have a.
Aaron Daniels, second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Action item seven point eight, discussion and possible action regarding policy four one one nine point five, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of adults with an intellectual disability or autism spectrum disorder.
Well, Mark Kulos will uh make a motion that we approve the updates for policy four one one nine point five.
Need a second?
Aaron Daniels, second.
I was, I mean, a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Seven point nine, action item, discussion and possible action regarding policy four one three four, social media.
Aaron Daniels moved to approve updates on policy four one three four.
Kevin Seatani, I will second the motion.
Motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Action item seven point one zero, discussion and possible action on model policy, exertional heat illness.
This is a new policy.
Okay, a new policy.
Yes.
Exertional heat illness.
Uh Mark Kulos, I move that we adopt uh the new model policy exertional heat illness.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Action item seven point eleven, discussion and possible action on a model policy for entitled cardiac arrest awareness.
Also a new policy.
Also a new policy.
And Mark Kulos uh making motion that we adopt the new policy uh for cardiac arrest awareness.
And we have a second on the, a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion?
Uh the previous item, this item and the next one, these were all new policies concerning uh because we have sports now in the middle schools.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted unanimously. Action item seven point one two, which is a new policy, discussion and action on emergency action plan.
Mark Kulos moved that we adopt uh the new model policy, emergency action plan.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pulling seven point one three because the wrong um draft policy was loaded onto board docs. So I'm going to bring that back to you in um.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Budget Expenditure Committee, I think we have our first ad hoc, um that's that's another, that's another one, never mind. Yeah. Never mind. Yeah, uh. Next one. Ad hoc committee, we have our first meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, five thirty here at the committee room, right?
Yep.
I think it's in.
Six P M. At City City Hall.
Six P M.
Three thirty-five.
Room three thirty-five in City Hall is where they put it.
Six thirty, you said?
Six P M.
Six P M, okay. Uh Negotiation Committee.
Negotiation Committee, we have a uh an agreement with the.
Uh food services.
Food service workers. And we're, so I believe, did they approve already?
Yes.
Yes, so we will be discussing in executive session and then uh voting in public session to approve that, to uh approve the contract. And we are still in negotiations with the administrative assistance, which is our last bargaining unit for this cycle of bargaining units.
Uh Policy Committee.
Thank you, Ben. Uh the Policy Committee members uh met Wednesday, April fifth uh to discuss the designated schools that was presented to all of us uh tonight. Uh it was a great disma- great discussion among our members and we uh came to a consensus to propose um the two schools that was uh talked about tonight.
Okay. Thank you. School Building Committee.
Uh School Building Committee, uh they're actually, they had their meeting probably tonight at six thirty. The Zoom, um there were some new bills that were submitted by C S G uh and they are, as the superintendent already said, they were preparing the grant proposal, the reimbursement proposal with the state due to the new um updates to the um educational needs of the district. So that's their main concern.
Uh Otis Library, uh Josh is not here. I D C S, Greg's not here. And if a liaison, I'm sorry, but I missed the uh last uh meeting and this month is the, it was tonight because of the uh spring break, so. I won't have a meeting, I mean, a motion, a uh report to read next month either. Uh Lauren.
Lauren hasn't had a meeting since the last, just before your last meeting and it's next one is uh this upcoming Thursday, so thank you.
Anybody have anything on the board reports? Yes, sir, Al.
Guess where I was? March twenty-ninth. Great game, great game. We were glad we had, no, please. I was there acting stupid on the front row. Uh it was crazy. They they it it was, they made it a good game. They they allowed it. I mean, they were there, both teams scored nearly a hundred points. It was, it was a good. Oh yeah, it wasn't like a blowout or anything. It was a good show and I, and our guys, a few of them um overestimated their ability. More than once. It was like, we're gonna, I'm gonna get this through. No, you feel free to step up a little closer. But for the most part, they had it and everybody had a great time. It was a great show. Uh nice to hear, great to hear. Thanks, Al.
And kudos to Al for staying zipped up all night. Waiting to reveal himself.
Uh, okay. Um we do have additional uh reports uh listed uh in your package or on the uh on the board box in case you uh didn't have a chance to see them. Other than that, um let's go on to executive session two.
Executive session two, uh pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two hundred, members of the Board of Education move to go into executive session for attorney-client privileged communication regarding discussion of the food service workers contract and non-renewal of certified staff. Dr. Kristine Stringfellow, Tamara Gloucester, Robert Serpensky, Lisa Hughes, Amber Ruttigliano, and Attorney Peter Nair may be asked to participate for summer all of the executive session at the request of the Board of Education.
Aaron Daniels, second that motion. All was in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote. We are now in executive session at eight twenty-nine P M. We are now in executive session at 8:29 PM.
More than once. It was like, we're gonna, I'm gonna get this through. No, you, feel free to step up a little closer. But for the most part, they had it and everybody had a great time. It was a great show.
Nice to hear. Great to hear. Thanks, Al.
And kudos to Al for staying zipped up all night. Waiting to reveal himself.
Uh, okay. We do have additional, uh, reports, uh, listed, uh, in your package or on the, uh, on the board box in case you, uh, didn't have a chance to see them. Other than that, um, let's go on to executive session two.
Executive session two, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-200, members of the Board of Education move to go into executive session for attorney-client privileged communication regarding discussion of the food service workers' contract and non-renewal of certified staff. Dr. Kristine Stringfellow, Tamarak Loester, Robert Zerpensky, Lisa Hughes, Amber Rettigliano, and attorney Peter Nair, may be asked to participate for summary oral of the executive session at the request of the Board of Education.
Aaron Daniels seconded that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous vote? We are now in executive session at 8:29 PM.
Here we are.
All right, we are now in executive session at 8:52 PM.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the Board of Education to approve ratification of the tentative agreement that the Food Service Workers Union has discussed in executive session.
Aaron Daniels seconded that motion.
There's a motion on the floor in a second, in a second to approve the contract for the food services. Mr. Nair, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous, approved.
Okay, Mark Kulos moved that the contract of employment of Joanna Kruchat not be renewed for the following year on its expiration at the end of the current 22-23 school year and that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such person in writing of this action.
Aaron Daniels seconded that motion.
There's a motion on the floor and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous, so voted.
Aaron Daniels, motion to adjourn the April 18, 23 Board of Education meeting.
Carlene second.
On the floor in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Coach. Joe, thank you.